By the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands.
While we stand under our indivisible liberty and freedom.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Jason is not here. All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we jump right to discussion items, uh, discussion items. First one on the list is the balanced calendar discussion.
So this is kind of a preview discussion. Um, we've, we've talked about this at meetings in the past. And, uh, I think we're gearing up to have a more robust conversation about a balanced calendar. There's a sample calendar on there. Um, and so it's a pretty developed conversation. Uh, that includes, uh, unions, parents. Uh, of course, we can, we can run some information about cost analysis. Schedules, uh, multiple schedules and how they overlap, uh, with the school year, everything from sports camps. Uh, to Patterson's, uh, schedule. And then, um, programming. The program we have and the program we typically offer in the summer and how that would work. And so, um. This is just kind of an initial conversation, uh, for student reps. This is about kind of a year-round schooling model. And getting ready to talk about that. There are implications, I think, in our local community. Possible discussions maybe but around food insecurities that students would have with this type of model and, uh, limiting. Students' ability to work and contribute to their families, uh, during the summer. And so, uh, we're just looking to, uh, kind of. As in this preview, put it out there. We want to know if there's any, um, kind of specific. Specific pieces that the board would like to know. I would assume financial implications and costs. And then, of course, I've, we've had initial conversations with, um, the teachers' union. And we've, uh, talked to the principals a little bit about it. And, uh, just allowing them to kind of, uh, get more information, build their understanding around it. Deanna, you wanna?
I would just say that there is a, there, there was a grant this year, there was a grant two years ago. It's a, it's a grant that'll would probably come out in the summer and be due in September. At least that's the way they've done it the last couple of years, and it's for up to seventy-five thousand dollars for, uh, like, study. To study it and make a decision about whether you want to do it or not. If, if the, if, if the decision ends up being that they, we don't want to pursue it. There are consequence to that, so you can take the grant and then say, you know what? This isn't gonna work for us, but seventy-five thousand dollars is a lot, but that's probably for a really large district studying with a lot of people. I don't imagine we would need that much funding, but, um, if it's something that we choose to move forward and at least study. It would be likely would this be something we could do in the coming year? And then after that, there's usually another round of grants if you're gonna, for your first year of implementation. Um, so, yeah.
What did the study involve?
It's just really, um, looking at how would, like, gathering information on how it would impact families. What would the, what would the count look like? It might be visiting schools that are in, um, a balanced calendar. And looking at some of the things they offer. Usually it would require meeting, having, you know, different unions represented and meeting. Outside of school time, could pay for staff time if we're, um, asking them to participate in meetings over that period of that year. So it would just depend. Um, there, like I said, there are a lot of schools that are doing it. I'm kind of surprised at how much money it is, honestly, because it seems like a lot to me, but, uh, I think it just. But it gives people the opportunity, and I think encouragement to, to try it, to try something, try it and, and look at the, the options at least.
I had a comment. Uh, it's been a few years ago when I think something's been ten year or two years has been five. And I lose track of time and I wish I'd have clipped it out because it was in the paper. And it was a study on they thought year-round school was cheaper to do, but now the paper where we got said it's more expensive to do.
It can, it can be. And so there's, there's a lot that goes into that, because the number of days are the same. So we're talking about one eighty, maybe less than that with conferences. But the question becomes about these intercession periods. About if we're running schedules, if we're running buses, if we're running food services during this time. And so that will, that can add up, um, in a hurry. And so really looking at, um, a- and how, you know. The grant funding we have and things we've used traditionally in the past for summer school. If we keep that program, if we don't keep that program, how we leverage those funds to do other things.
It does give you the opportunity in the intercession to do some intervention, and it's like, if you think just about the high school. If those intersections maybe line up with the end of a trimester. Like, if a student, we, we, we did this for many years in, at the middle school. We had Washington State history. It was the, the, the one required, it was a required class that every student had to take. And what we did was, we used to do it the last semester. And it was like, why are we doing this? Because then if they didn't pass, then they go to the high school already behind. So we actually moved it to seventh grade, put it in the first trimester and, or first semester then. And then what we did is if a student didn't pass, we did an after-school program. And they, to, so they could come to do whatever they needed to do, the whatever work they need to make up, maybe what assessments they might need to retake. So they could get a passing grade and we weren't sending kids to the high school without passing. So you could do something similar. At the high school, if a student, like, they didn't pass some of their classes, you could do an intercession. What do they need to do so they can get their, you know, meet the standard, get to a passing grade? It would have some good uses that way. You could do, you know, reading intervention with the littles, those kinds of things, so. It, I think there's some, for some people has a lot of appeal. I think because education is, it's like, go, 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 go. And I think some of those breaks might be really helpful to staff for their own personal strength and mental health. And kind of have a little recovery and then you're ready to, you know, take up, you have a week and you go right back at it, so. I, I, it's definitely an interesting concept. Many, many states. I was at a conference eight, nine years ago with a, with a assistant superintendent from Denver, from the Denver, Denver area school districts. And, uh, they, she, she was going and going back. School started August second, and they went pretty much through the end of June. And they had the month of July off, but they had those breaks in between. Um. You know, you don't get the summer melt, which is kids losing it over about seven or eight weeks. They're out of school or longer, you know, so.
It'd be interesting to see the impact on, um, students that are on AP classes and running starts. And how all that melts together with the, with the.
Well, right now are the, the running start schedule doesn't match the school, our school schedule as it is. So, um, the, those kids don't start class in the fall till like, um, the third week of September usually. And so some of that would still be the case, but it's not gonna impact their ability to do that. The, the AP class, we really only have, right now we have one AP class, but there's an AP test they can take. Because most of the kids are getting college credit through college and high school. So you could run those classes the first two trimesters, like, run them early, because you know the test is gonna be at the same time. It's gonna be in May and whenever, it's always gonna be at the same time. They're not gonna change it for anybody. I mean, it would be nice if that became a little more flexible, but, um, you know, I think there's ways to work through everything. In six weeks, that six to seven weeks is a tipping point for the, for getting. So if you can shorten that time period, kids are out.
There, there are some, I, I would say that, you know, one of the questions will be around maintenance. Uh, those three months are when maintenance comes in and cleans carpets and polishes the hallways. It does present unique opportunities, uh, like Director Riley has mentioned, around field trips, extracurriculars. Uh, enrichment type of activities. It allows us to have weeks of time where we're able to do those activities. Or, as Deanna suggested, kind of a double shot, where we're looking at credit recovery and credit retrieval. There are some, I would say that, like, uh, when we look at football summer camp. Um, that may fall at a time where students, you know, there's a mass exodus, it feels like, in the high school. And so just a, I think it's, it'll be a robust conversation, um, and multifaceted. But it's a, it's good work. Um, Kevin Chase at E S D one oh five is one of the leaders in the state. On the conversation, and so he, he's a, he'll be retiring at the end of this year, but for right now, he's just a phenomenal resource. Um, if we're moving in that direction, I think that there's a couple of things that maybe should happen. Uh, Joe West out at Patterson reached out to me not too long ago and said, hey. We were, uh, we would like to try and align our calendar with yours. It just makes sense. It would make sense to do that. And so that would be one. The other one would be to go and visit a district and talk about, uh, benefits and challenges that they may have. And so, uh, that seventy-five thousand dollars would do that. Student voice, I think, is very important on this one. Um, about like, yeah, it's, you'll be going to school the same, the same amount of time, but just a, a different schedule.
Well, how about that student voice? What do you guys think?
She has more notes than I do, so I'll let her go first. Um, okay, so generally, I like the idea. Um, I know that this has worked in other places, other countries, sorry. I think that it would be something good to, that we still look into. Something somewhat similar to this is, um. I was actually preparing something to bring to you guys. But I think it's a good idea. This is, um, that summer slump, um, where students just kind of lose everything. Cause let's face it, we're not gonna spend six weeks remembering what we did. We're gonna play video games and sleep until noon. So I think it improves with that. Um, at least on this one, I like that there's, the wait starts on, on Mondays. Um, because we're still trying to, you know, get used to waking up again after that nice weekend. Um, I think that. The few weeks, every few weeks, there's that week-long break. I think that that's good as well. Um. I, I guess I, I can say a little bit more, not specifically on this, but on a schedule change. Um. Uh, we were talking about this outside the meeting that, um, and I actually discussed this with, um, a few teachers. About potentially starting school later in the day. We were thinking sometime around eight fifty, about move, move it back an hour and then move the end of the day from. Two forty to three thirty. It cuts about two minutes off of each class at the high school level. But it, there's been numerous studies that show that it reduces tardies, it improves student mental health, which we know we had a great conversation about that last week. Um, it also will reduce teen, uh, car accidents. It's a weird statistic, but it's included in those reports. Um, test performances, mood behaviors. Again, tardies, which I know is something really big. I think I saw the numbers from the middle school. They said they had, I believe it was twenty-five hundred in the first trimester. So it can greatly, greatly reduce that, because students will get their own time. I know that I have a hard time getting to my first period class. Sometimes it feels like I'm sliding into the room. Um. So that extra hour, and actually, this week, Hosa, um, at the high school is, uh, doing a little campaign about students need more sleep. And whether you wanna say that we should go to bed earlier or whatever you might have it, that's one way to look at it. But you also have to look at that we have responsibilities outside of wake up, go to school, go to bed. There's people that have jobs, we have homework, we have family time, we have time that we just wanna sit and relax. Um. So that's something to take into consideration as well, and I think that that is something that would. Improve. If we're, if we're looking at a big change like this, why not move the actual times back, not just the days?
You, you make good points, and I, I've heard all those things. They, they actually have done studies that teenagers body clock shift. So it's not just like, like, oh yeah, I could go to bed at nine o'clock, but your body clock shifts, so they want to sleep in later. Um, to go, because they want to go to bed later, so they're, it. We, I had a conversation just, so last week, the week before, the elementary principal's pissed. I asked the very same question, like, why are we going to school so early? Cause we use, everything has shifted so early. And some of it came with the, with trend moving in, like, different things happened that shifted us around. And sometimes it was easier just to put this one earlier, this one later. I'm like, we can take this whole thing and move it forward like half an hour, wouldn't be so early. So I was just with the elementary principals, the, the middle school and high school principal weren't there when we were having the conversation. But it's too early for the little ones, too. So I think that it needs to shift in general. I said, the buses just shift with us. It's okay. So I think we're, that's gonna probably happen anyway. Maybe not a whole hour, but.
Uh, I know, I was, I was talking with another teacher as well who said that, um. Of course, there has to be union negotiations with it, um, everything. But, um, he was also saying that there's also the implication of some families start their days earlier than others, and so they need kids out of the house. So that's something to take into account as well. Um, but I, I like the idea. I think, I think like everything, there's room for improvement, but I think it's a good starting.
To add to what Noah said, the whole sleep and needing a lot more sleep and our responsibilities. I have to, like, in order to do my best, I have to feel my best. And there's nights, um, I get home on a school night at like twelve o'clock, because we were just in Ellensburg playing basketball. And that, that has always impacted me. And the first period is really hard, but. I think I, I really do like the idea of a year-round school kind of thing. It's, I've always been interested in that. I just know that that would require a lot more from the district to support the students. Like you guys said, and that's why I really support studying it and looking into it, because. That's the one thing that I'd be worried about is all the little things that could come. But if we were able to provide for the students and. Fix those little spots, it, it would, it would be really good. I also wanted, I just, I think I need to know a little bit more about the schedule, like, what kind of ideas there is on that. Because the, a big thing really is, is kids who have to be adults and take care of things, like that's, that's really big. And I think it was eight forty-five, three thirty. That, we, we did talk about that. It, it seemed like a really good idea. But there's probably a lot of things you guys would have conflict and stuff like that. So just knowing ideas on scheduling, just, just to be absolutely on board with it. Also, trimesters and semesters. Do you have ideas on what you would do for that?
As in going back to semester versus trimesters?
What would be your preferred way of doing this?
That's more with these guys and what I prefer.
Okay.
If I'm being honest.
Cause I, I know that it changes a lot. Um, when I was in elementary school, it was quarters, and then now it's trimesters. I was in online school for a while and it was semesters. Um. I know that it's hard, though, from personal experience, that if you have someone coming out of district with a different, um. Year setup, that it conflicts with grades crossing. I know that when I transferred back into district, I was, I had, uh. Just started, or I was actually, I was about halfway through, um, a semester. And the grade, when it transferred over, because we're on trimester system. Um, and I know you can't have uni- uniformity across the line, but it would be nice to see what's something that's more common or used. So that way, we don't have to worry about losing those grades or whatever it is when you have people coming in or out of district. And then just adding on, also onto this, again, if we're looking at stuff and we're thinking, making changes. There's another study that students who, um, are in math classes, which is almost all of us. They tend to have better performance if those math classes are, A, out at the beginning of the day, and it's not at the end of the day. So it might be something to look into to try and reschedule some classes that students are struggling in. You've seen the data that math is something that we really struggle in. So it'd be ni- might be nice to move around scheduling to have math classes be towards the middle of the day. When students have either just had lunch, they're just about to go to lunch. They have something, their minds are sharp. They're not waking up groggy and they're not, uh, can I go home yet? And that'd be something nice to look into that, and that might also improve the, uh, the math scores a little bit. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Comments?
I had a comment, because I know that, I think it's at height, and then for review, there's, I think, in the. The small bulletin that comes out, like, almost regularly, it's like, please remember, the doors do not open until X time. So there's, I know that there's kids coming early and the parents are taking them there on the way to work, because. Most working people are at work, not at eight forty-five, seven thirty, eight o'clock. So I think there's that issue to consider as well. Especially our little kids. I know all of us always work and have careers, and I think that's something that appeals to me with the balanced calendar. Is that, you, we can find little chunks of time, you know, for, for childcare, but, you know, arranging. For those of us that aren't teachers, for childcare from June through August, and that's all day long. It's, I mean, it's, it's difficult. It's not easy. You hope you get your child into a program, and hopefully you have great, wonderful grandparents, and if you have neither one of those, the kids are home alone. And that's when you're not fed. That's mental health issues. Crying goes up, um, lots of things. So I think these are considered as well. I, I would prefer a nine AM start time to everything in my life, because the seven, but that's not. How I work, right?
So nine AM around my house is like lunchtime.
Yeah.
I don't remember the last time I made it till six o'clock.
Yeah. And I'd, I'd like to hear from the teachers and how they feel about both later start time and about the calendar.
Yeah, this will definitely be a much, much longer discussion. But it does sound like it's worth having. I mean, whether it's for beneficial reasons for the district or beneficial reasons for the kids. I mean, it's, why not have the discussion? So, anything else? All right, we'll move on to fundraising discussion, or the fundraising discussion.
Um, so as we're developing policy, um, I've been meeting with, um, Renee Martinez. She may be on Zoom, but she wasn't sure if she was gonna be able to make it or not. Um, really, I just wanna create a strong collaboration with the Booster Club and then any other PTA. So that we kind of know where, where we can go with fundraising from the district perspective, and then where they pick up. Um, so same thing, if someone's approaching the Booster Club with requests, they can say, no, that's an ASB thing. That needs to go through the district. Um, so that they can give clearer guidance, and then we can give clearer guidance, knowing, you know, what we can and can't do. Um, I know a hot topic, and it's been a hot topic for years, um, is who we can accept donations from, and like, who we are. Willing to accept donations from and who we are not. Um, so I kind of just have a conversation, so then I can incorporate that into the policy to see where the board stands on that. Um, my recommendation, and I did look at Richland, um, they do have a board policy that covers this. Um, and the way that they word it is that they pretty much will accept money from anywhere. But when it comes to solicitation, advertising, anything to like give name to that, it cannot be, um, anything, you know, drugs, alcohol. Gambling, anything that, you know, is against the law, any of those. And that's, um, and it goes kind of down to the, the building level. For them to determine if it's within their mission or not. Um, and then, of course, within questions that would go to their superintendent. Um, I like the language that they have, um, and it also just says, as long as someone's not trying to get advertising or sponsorships. With the money, that we could still accept it. Um, and it has to be, obviously, for educational purposes. Um, but I just kind of wanted to open the floor, is, I'm gonna get feedback on, are we willing to consider something like that? Where we don't restrict who's getting money. We just do not have any strings attached when we do accept.
Hi there, this is Renee Martinez.
Hi Renee, thanks for joining us.
You're welcome. I just appreciated working with Amy, and we're just trying to figure this out of. The school being separate from the Booster Club. The Booster Club is its own five oh one C three. Um, and of course, we want to work with the district, but we would like some clear boundaries, too, of what the expectation is from the district. Um, for example, past practice has been that, um, the Booster Club wouldn't have fundraisers. Or accept money for sponsorship from wineries or other businesses in that line. Um, but the Booster Club feels that times have changed a little bit. And we would like to be having, um, fundraisers and support our local businesses. For example, um, the winery's out by Yellow Rose or something like that, where, um. We could have a fundraising dinner or something. So I just. Know for me personally, we would like some guidance on what's acceptable, and then, um, to have that discussion, I guess.
So Renee, having, having been the Xandy, by the way, having been with band boosters and, and football and wrestling boosters all at one time or another.
We don't have separate wrestling or, um, sports boosters like that. It's, the Proster Booster Club is for sports and cheer. And Booster Club or music boosters is its own separate.
Yeah, we did, we did for a number of years. We had a booster club for each one. That way each club could raise their own money and. Accounts that, that.
We have separate accounting, but it's one booster club since nineteen eighty-six.
Anyway, um, the thought with, with wineries and stuff wasn't, and I'm pretty open-minded about it, but. It's legal as well as, at this point, marijuana. So if you accept from one, you don't really have a choice but to accept from the other. That's why in the past, we've not accepted from either one. Um, I'm not opposed to it, but it's gonna be a, a much bigger discussion.
And there's other, there's some other complicated pieces to that. And so with, when it's an ASB fundraiser, you know, it can't be. There's a lot more restrictions. The students have to be leading it. Um, you know, it should be within the, the school facilities. Unless approved otherwise. Um, you know, there's some certain restrictions with that. So if the Booster Clubs are running a fundraiser, they add a winery, but with the dinner and another caterer, you know, or, and maybe it's not. Some of, a lot of the wineries have, um, a couple like family rooms, I don't know, like, or, I don't know what to call. Anyway, where anyone can go in at certain hours, um, is, can students attend? Can it still be, can the boosters accept, you know, money going that direction? So that's kind of where the overall conversation is for booster clubs. Um, but then also, if those, if those entities want to give us a check, say they want to say, hey, here's ten thousand dollars. It can go to your stadium, or here's two thousand dollars. I want it to go to, you know, student textbooks, or whatever the case may be. Um. What do we say? I mean, do we continue to say no, or do we open up? Open it up to, because our, our community is very heavy in this area, so.
And I think it gets very sticky for us as a booster club to say, no, we won't, um. Partner with these wineries when we see the school board accepting, um. Grants from, um, the Legends Casino that teachers have worked hard on their own time to, um. Get those grants and seek that funding. So they're seeking, you know, they're getting funding from the Legends Grants. And then we see that team dinners are being had at family restaurants where alcohol is not served, obviously, during that team dinner. Because, but they're, um, you know, those are family businesses and they want to have a team dinner there. So it just, it's very sticky, and I just am trying to seek clarification. For the Booster Club and then for the district.
Any other opinions?
I would like to see Richland's policy. I'm kind of like Andy. Money is money, if, as long as they don't want us to put a sign up. At the stadium, if they're just wanting to give money as a donation.
To support the program, yeah.
To support the school or any particular program. I have no problem with that. Money is money.
I can read a little bit if this helps, or I can send it to you. Um, so like for advertising, since the district may allow advertising in specified school. And, and our district areas in publications, at special activities and or events, and on certain materials and clothing products. This includes names of the corporate sponsors and our donors. If a sponsor's corporate logo, name, or trademark is used, it must be the appropriate legal copyright and or trademark certification. Basic types and means goes to types of advertising. In no instance shall the district accept advertising for alcohol, tobacco, drugs, drug paraphernalia, weapons, violence, gambling. Pornographic or illegal materials or materials with which represent these in a positive light. Advertisements may reject, may be rejected by the district if determined by the superintendent or designated to be inconsistent with the educational objectives of the district. So I, I like that, so it's neat, like, it kind of leaves it open-ended for just general, as far as like, what's it? Cause the, the first part of the policy is about the donations and the community involved, but then that restricts it. So just saying, yep, it's open-ended, but we're not gonna advertise in that way.
I, uh, several years ago, when, when, uh, marijuana became legal. Uh, we had a local, we had a local firm here in the Proster area that, um, offered ten thousand dollars to the district. And, um, uh, with the, I, general idea that that money could, we could use it anyway, but, but. With the, I general idea that that money could, we could use it anyway, but, but. The general idea was that money could then be used to provide, um, drug education. For, you know, for our students and, um. We were really kind of a, it was kind of a split because, uh, personally, I felt like that was, that was a good. That could have been a good reason to have accepted, uh, the funding and use that those funds. To provide, because we were scrambling, but use those funds to provide education for our, our students. On, uh, on drug awareness, but, um, um. Doctor Tolkien, he was, he did not want to shuffle that line at all between. Alcohol and, uh, and in the school of any, you know, any way, shape or form, so.
You know, for years, a hot button topic was the wine and food fair on the school grounds. You know, so, um, because when my kids were in school, if even had a shirt on, they, they. Took a shirt away from my daughter. It was really cute. I'm trying, it just had a saying on it. And you had to be thinking that way to even reading had, had something about, you know, no big cigar or whatever that saying is. Lord, she wasn't gonna smoke a cigar, but she came home and she said, I can't wear this, you know. You know, there's a line there.
Yeah.
You know, I can see not, you know, drink Olympia or whatever, you know, but, uh. And for years, our band has played, uh, Tequila. Which is a great song.
They don't say Tequila anymore though.
They need to stop playing it when I was in high school. I think, I think the booster club gets to do whatever they want to do. The school can't control the booster club. They're their own nonprofit and I think you can.
Okay. We can, in order to have that, that official affiliation, they have to follow.
But currently we don't have any signed agreements. We don't have any agreement since two thousand fifteen. So we don't have, the Booster Club doesn't have a signed agreement with the district. So that was kind of how this all started is. Hey, maybe we should get, you know, look at the policy from WASBO and the state. And all of this. And so we're trying to work this out and Amy's great about finding the policies and. Examples that are around us. And so we're all just trying to figure out what. Is best for each entity because we, as the booster club, want to follow the school board policies and want to. Follow their rules and be in alignment with them. But we are also a separate, we are not part of the school, so we can, you know, do. Different businesses or have different partnerships that the school necessarily can't. But in the end, we all want to support the students and support the school, so. I think we all want the same thing and we definitely all want to be doing things on the up and up. It's just, there are these. Gray areas, for example, the sports schedules that the booster club, it's a big fundraiser, but what if. The hospital wants to provide advertising on the sports schedule that the booster club does as a fundraiser. That's okay, but then what if fourteen hands would like to do some advertising also? And it's the booster club's fundraiser of the high school sports schedule, so. Can we do that as a booster club?
Well, just from the way she read the Richland policy, I wouldn't think that although we could theoretically accept money for fourteen hands. We couldn't then advertise for them.
If we write our policy the same way, that is correct.
That would be the school district though. The booster club. Can we have advertising on our sports schedules that we print out? And distribute at local businesses. I feel like that's okay, but we wouldn't. Get them to sponsor the football ba- the banners that we have on the fence at the football stadium because that is advertising on school property.
The other piece of that language too that stuck out to me is to write, to advertise those in a positive light. So you could also interpret that just by having their local logo on a sports schedule. That's not necessarily. Promoting them as a positive light. That's just maybe their logo. So unless it says, oh, drink wine or. You know, or this is the best wine out there, the best in the valley, those things. Now that's an, that's a complete interpretation piece. And that's where we would definitely need more, um, board direction. Uh, whenever, and just to give some history, so with the booster club, whenever they have a fundraiser they would like to do. They do work with our athletic director, um, to make sure that. Whatever they're fundraising for, uh, is at least gives the district an opportunity to be entitled and compliant. So whether the booster club is considering, um. The different sports or, uh, whatever money that they bring in the district can match whatever those resources are for the other sports. And so there's already that front end conversation they're having with anything that they're doing. And so for also like for the sports schedule, there's a separate contract that we have found that we have signed in the past that it does restrict what kind of advertising. They are allowed to have on the sports schedule because it's representing us as the district. At the end of the day, even though they're the ones with all the manpower behind it, it's our name, it's the district's name on it. Um, so that's why I think it's also very important that we just have that really strong collaboration with the booster club. And so whatever we decide on for the district policy. Should at least give them the opportunity to also be successful with how, you know, however they need to go about it. And but having that clear and defined line, when is it okay for us? When is it okay for them? Um, when is it a hard stop? No, for all of those things. And then we'll follow up with policy to actually have it in writing. So we all understand.
We definitely need to write a policy.
I think those who are, who are reviewing other districts' policies and were writing our policy. Need to be real careful that we're reviewing that with our attorney also, so that we're not getting ourselves into a legal. Mess down the road.
Well, and a lot of the policies have already been reviewed. I mean, the, these aren't just coming out of nowhere. You know, between WASBO and the state, um, Booster Club Association, you know, they're all working together, so. It's all pretty standard and straightforward. It's just, I guess, a lot about. How clear we want to make it and the interpretation because. I could see a real benefit to booster club being able to have the flexibility to have. Events at wineries and things like that, and, or even just getting donations from wineries. Um, that a lot of our families are employed at and, you know, really want to support things. So having the, them. Contribute to the booster club who then can make a donation to the high school for, um. You know, my ultimate goal here, ADA seating at the stadium or improving the track at the stadium or things like that, that would benefit. The whole community, not just students. So that's the larger picture.
I guess the easy question, is there any hesitation for me to bring a policy to the board for official review with opening that language a little bit? To maybe match Richland a little bit more, um. If it becomes a problem, then maybe we reel back, but kind of open the gates a little bit with any.
Or a little more maybe. I'd, I'd like to see a little more what else, uh, what other, um, districts are doing and. I mean, I, I agree with Renee. It'd be nice to have, um, clear guidelines. For the booster club and, um, and so it's trying to guess every time you want to do something. And, uh, we've been kind of dancing around this topic.
Yeah.
For a long time. It, maybe it's time to really dig in and, and let's get it done, but.
Yeah, that would be great. Cause it's, it is hard to do any long range planning for any. Big fundraiser because we don't really know. You know, we don't, we just want to be very clear with an agreement following district policy. We don't want to go off and do something that. Is gonna reflect poorly in that manner, but it just seems like there's a lot of. Space that we could really work and get some financial headway here to really make an impact.
Why don't you forward Richland's tall of us so they can look through it? And if you dream something up. We'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
And then one more question about fundraising, but not, no, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna answer Amy's question about, um, cause I do work in a winery. And, um, kids can come in, they just can't consume, cause it's not a bar.
Right, okay. That's what I thought, like, kids can be there, but.
We've, we've had, I know, like, well, even when we were running the, the bond for the, for the new school. And it was unfortunate they couldn't put their name on it, but we had a couple of local wineries that donated quite a lot of money to buy signs and. And advertising and stuff to help pass the bond for, for this building. But because of the stance we took, I mean, if I'm being honest, we could, I'd be okay with wine making classes. I mean, mid-class go along with that. I don't see a problem. But the only, the only argument is, is once you open the door, if it's legal, it's fair game for everybody, so.
Well, I think the booster club, just talking about that, like talking, not wanting to open the floodgates, but taking the stance that. We support things that are federally legal.
Well, it won't be long, but.
Well, but hopefully that'll be after my tenure of the booster club, but if that just gets us a little bit. So that is kind of the line that we're dancing of a federally legal activity, just to put that in there and emphasize that to. Kind of stop that, but, um, and then I know that there is a question, well, how come some things, some fundraisers are done at the Eagles? And that's a fraternal organization. So that is why there have been some fundraising dinners or whatever with sports and clubs and things there, so. Cause people will say, why can, why is that okay and others are not, so.
We've even had prom and, and, and formal dances at the Chlor Center.
Yes.
So, I mean, it doesn't get any more involved in that, but.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we really have to look at our community and community that wants to support us. Um, it's, yeah, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, one or two.
The other question completely unrelated to that, that is more so about having fundraisers as flow through. Um, I'm just here, uh, so we have a few of the schools do fundraisers. Um, where they're collecting the money and then essentially sending most of it back out. To whatever entity that they're supporting. Does that need to come through the board? I mean, do we ever talk about which ones we allow and which ones we don't and what those.
Is it for boosters?
Penny's for patients and the kids are connected, collecting money for leukemia and lymphoma and.
There's, um, the Pinkly, things like that where they're raising money and then sending it back out. So it's kind of a, just a flow through ASB.
I would love to say the more the merrier and I don't want to know anything, but unfortunately that, that opens the door for. Uh, maybe somebody forgot to, you know, deposit the, the bank envelope or.
What's, what's the, what's the WASBO rules on that? I mean, what's the, does, uh, school districts.
I, I would think it has to be traced.
A lot of it comes under board policy. So I'm trying to make sure our board policy is aligned with what you want, what you would like for the district. And then we can follow up with the features, um, with how we manage these. So, so right now, um, each of the buildings are operating, but how they always. We're not doing anything they haven't done before. Um, but I would like to make sure that we have stuff in writing, that we have procedures, that we know what's going on, how we track it. When the money comes through us, when it doesn't, when it's ASB, when it's not. There's just some questions I'm trying to answer. And so in the process of trying to answer those, I would just like to make sure I'm following your direction.
I always thought those went all went to ASB, you know, the, the penny drive, the.
So like, um, pennies for patients back in the day when we did that. You, we took all the donations to Coinstar and Coinstar takes no. No portion like they would if you just dumped your own change in there. And so you, we would just get, you go dump all the money in. Get the receipt, take it back and it was tracked that way, but they, we didn't, we didn't count it. We didn't. We didn't receipt it into ASB. We use the Coinstar because you can, there's several, there's quite a few different, um. Charitable organizations you can use Coinstar for. We filled up the Coinstar. Who'd you call?
I don't know, you like the penny drive, the thing, the Pinkly.
There's a lot, they do.
And, and I want to be completely supportive of it. If the board is supportive of that, we continue those processes. I just want to make sure from the procedure side. From our policy side, I align it with what we have to do. Do they need to come to the board and ask? Do we want to have it in our annual cycle? So as they're requesting the budget for the next year, saying, these are the fundraisers that we're doing. We're not making money from them. Or we might just make a little bit, but for the most part, it's just, we're gonna get the money and we're gonna send it out. Um, but just knowing that, so do they come once a year? Do they come, you know, thirty days prior to when they would start or ninety days prior to when they would have that event?
Don't they have to submit all their fundraisers anyway for board approval? But I don't recall seeing that. I remember doing that as a principal, but I don't recall seeing that in a really long time. Cause couldn't it just be on there with the fundraisers?
Correct. And so in the future, that is how we can do that.
Okay.
Are we thinking that's gonna be for, for everything, for every sport?
They have, they, every, like, every coach should fill one out, every club, like. And, and a lot of times they put a lot of things on there. They may not enter, meaning a lot more money than, that's why a lot of times the high school budget is way higher than. Like, oh, we're gonna spend, we're gonna take in seven hundred thousand dollars and spend six hundred thousand and it's really more like four. Um, so.
I'd love to see what other school districts are doing. I think it's a good idea that we have policy and control procedures for it. I think it might, it would be good to for board education to know how many fundraisers are out there. I, I could tell you, being a downtown business, I, I can tell you how often a fundraiser comes through our door and perhaps not everybody else is aware of how often it is within.
And to speak to that, um, Casey is doing a fabulous job at kind of. Creating almost like, she knows what the needs are and she knows what the sports are doing or what the clubs are doing. And trying to, like, rather than going asking for donations, like, how are we, how, how can we be creative and raising this money and earning it? Working hard for it, rather than just, you know, give, 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 can I have more, can I have more? Um, and so she's been really great at communicating that with the clubs and the sports and saying, you know, we gotta do this. So that all of our businesses, our downtown businesses are not constantly being hit for everything. We understand that. And so we're gonna try to make some shifts in that too, you know. Maybe some larger global asks and less of the constant, you know, nickel and dime ask too. And but we're, we are looking at that. Having some kind of schedule of fundraisers, but there's a lot. So every club, I mean, we've got, I think we've said. There's sixty. There's like sixty different clubs groups, you know, and whatnot. And so they all will have their own fundraiser and then each of the elementary buildings as well. So I will get together some, um. What other, someone, uh, can't even talk, what other districts are doing as examples? And then we'll move forward with getting some of that language in front of you.
Be great. Thanks for the time.
Good enough. All right. Was there anything else about fundraising? Anybody wants to say questions? Throw anything at us? All right, then we're gonna talk about, uh, potential meeting dates and times.
Yeah, so it's just a quick survey that we did, uh, that the board requested. So we had three hundred and sixty-three respondents, um. Majority of them said Monday, Tuesday and majority indicated, uh, four PM or six PM. Uh, we don't know what day or what time that's preferable, so we could actually dig deeper and say. Of Monday and Tuesday, what would you, you know, what times on those dates you'd prefer? Um, but just something the board could, to consider if they're looking at, uh, switching the meeting dates, times, so.
I think the survey was really short. It went out Friday and when were the results stopped collecting?
Uh, today.
Okay. And was it only on social media?
Uh, I believe so. Yeah, we did social media or website.
I think if we're gonna change, it needs to go out to the whole community. It needs to be emailed to the school, district email to every parent. It needs to be on social media. It needs to be in the record bulletin. Mailed out every single form. I think we should be mindful of not conflicting with other public entities. City meets on Tuesday. We want. Community members to choose. Do I wanna go to a city meeting? Do I wanna go to a school meeting? They shouldn't have to choose. That, that shouldn't be a conflict.
Is, is there anything in our district that says Mondays suck?
No, the.
National sentiment, I think.
You get where I'm going with it though.
Yeah, the, the, the not over the years. It's the Wednesday, Wednesday night with church, Tuesday night was conflict with, um, cities. We used to do the opposite Tuesdays, uh, from the city and that was fine for a long time, but now that we have the. Like usually a third meeting, there would be a conflict if you.
The city has a work session on Tuesdays too.
Yeah.
My other comment was, can the student representatives and teachers and staff be here in the afternoon at four?
I can.
Yeah, I can.
It's irrelevant.
I was gonna say, anybody that works four o'clock would be really hard. Jason would have trouble being here.
I, I could barely make six. Roll in, kick off the muddy boots, put on the dry ones and drive down here, so. Roll in, kick off the muddy boots, put on the dry ones and drive down here, so.
Honestly, I would have the board members on the meeting.
Yeah. I, so I, I would say a future survey needs to go out to a broader audience. For a longer period of time, at least, and I don't think any start time should be before six PM, to be mindful of everyone.
No, there's no way all five of us could. Could guarantee being here at four or five, even on the best of, of weeks.
And we want community input.
Yeah.
We want people to be able to come.
But, but we also have to be able to be here, so. Even if every single person that responds says two thirty is perfect. Ain't going to happen.
Yeah.
So.
If uh. Oh, i- if there was, I would, if there was a majority that selected two, three and four. Um, I would also probably recommend against it, because we get down to an equity of voice issue. That um, like you'd indicated, a lot of our parents can't make it, especially if they're dependent on um. Their income, you know, so if they take an hour off to be at a board meeting and voice their concern, they're losing lots of money. Um, salaried employees, sometimes they can get an hour off here or there, flex their time. So, yeah, ju- just being mindful of uh, who we're serving and how we're serving them.
I hate to say it like this, but if you're going to put a time on it, it, six or seven, they could have a preference. And then as for the day, you know, that's obviously a little more open.
Well, six was selected, so.
Okay, well, that's as any then.
Yeah.
Does the study session have to be on the same day as the regular board meetings? Like, if every board meeting was like month, like the regular one is on Monday, then the study sessions were Thursdays or, or Tuesdays, or something where.
They could be.
Complicated. Just as thrown in, I get there because we have the other conference.
I have enough problems to remember the regular meetings, that's why. Consecutive Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Work well, but.
Yeah.
But we'll put it back out, um.
Come back in a week or have it. I think it should be out for a week.
Yeah.
And it should be.
Because I didn't even know we did it.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm not on.
They should have printed to you.
He would think, huh?
Um, no, I would think. But I think we need to re, retool it and get it out to a broader part of the community.
Give it a week, let him. Let him speak and we'll move from there.
I did have one suggestion on that.
Yes, sir.
Something that might be worth looking into is if you were to do it. Uh, like a ranked choice, like the first option is this time, second option is this time. Um, so that way, after the week, you can look at the results and. You know, if there's a really low threshold that wanted at three o'clock, you can go to what the second choice is, tallying up. Till you're left with two options and whichever one has the most is what you know.
Well, but even, unfortunately, even if we get back into the weeds on that, whether it's. If it's, if, if, if everybody chooses three or four, whatever, it's irrelevant, because if we can't be here.
Let's not make that an option, like. First, second option, and how about a day, how about an option, and absolutely not this day.
Well, I assume the absolutely not would be Friday. I know, the least of all of them.
Our pack friends love pack meetings on Friday.
Really?
I was surprised at how many pick, people picked Monday.
That's the day they pick, it's Friday.
I picked Monday, yeah.
I would have.
Everybody works for me, but I'm thinking, gee, after a weekend, I wouldn't think people would want to come to a meeting on a Monday night. But that was just me.
Well, you know what? We'll put it out and we'll see what comes back.
Maybe have the Chamber reach out to other local groups. The Chamber puts out a weekly newsletter, HDPA puts out a weekly newsletter. And other groups, and have them put the survey out that way as well.
Going to put it in the newspaper too, it might be worthwhile to have like a QR code or something that people can scan. I, I know people who read newspapers usually don't, uh, don't know what a QR code is.
I know what they are, but I can't ever get them to work.
That, that brings up a good point. Should a paper copy should be available at the district office? To come in and take, take a paper copy. There are people that don't internet, and I think that.
I'm sorry, phone phones don't do QR codes.
They do. Actually, it's five G, believe it or not. We, we were, we were in trivia and I, I brought up YouTube and I started playing and it was. Who was it? Somebody was there. There was a younger gal there. She's like, what are you doing? And she couldn't believe I could. Listen to music and do YouTube on my phone, I said, absolutely. It really is, a lot more than people think, anyway. So let's get that out, we'll run it for a week or two and see what comes back before we worry about it. There's no sense in. Worrying about something that hasn't happened yet, so. So that leads us to the board self-assessment. I asked for this to be put on. Uh, I spent about fifteen minutes working on mine, and then the grandkids tipped something over and I ended up stopping, and then I haven't got back to it yet. But uh, it's um, I said last time, it's very enlightening. When you go through, if you answer the questions honestly. Um, and you start looking back at what your answers were, it's very telling. Um, I would encourage all of us to get through it sometime in the next couple of weeks, and then. I don't remember exactly how we do it. I think we contact them for the results and then.
And then they schedule a time to come out and talk with us and bring the results.
It's, it's pretty brief. I, seems to me it was only like an hour.
Did you get an actual survey with your link?
Yeah.
So my link took me to a study about it, and then I emailed Matt, and I messaged Selena too, and I said, hey, this is only a study, and they said, yes. That will all be sent out the survey later.
Oh, I just went on, picked a crosser and started.
Yeah, I didn't get any direction, mine had no direction like that. That's what you said, Matt.
Yeah, there, the link had um, asked us to reach out to WASDA. Maybe there is a button on it.
Yeah, I just went to WASDA and hit self-assessment, and you picked your district. And it's seventy-five or eighty-five questions, and I made it like thirty in and something crashed, it spilled on the carpet, and that was the end of it for that moment, but. But yeah.
This is what you said, Matt, the need to initiate the survey with WASDA. I believe WASDA emails it to each board member individually, so I didn't. I didn't, I didn't.
You know what, I'll, I'll go back, I'll go back on and look, maybe. Maybe the link wasn't hot then, or maybe I, I'll figure it out, but anyway. Yeah, yeah, well, because I, I know I started mine and went right in.
Okay.
But anyway, once that's finished, you, you submit it, and then after they get all five of us, they.
Then they contact with district, then they make a, a, a time when they can come out and review the results with us.
But I think, I think it'll be beneficial for, for everybody, so.
Yeah, I think.
So that's the end of our discussion items. We're going to go into executive session. I'll go ahead and read it, just because I'm supposed to. Um, to review the performance of a public employee, RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero. Parentheses, one G, no action to be taken. Probably supposed to read the bottom part too, huh? It is, to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee, however. Subject to RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero, parentheses, four. Discussion by governing body salaries, wages, and other con- conditions of employment generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. When a governing body elects to take final action, hiring, setting salary of an individual, individual employee or class of employees. Discharging, disciplining, an employee, that action shall be taken in an open meeting. And we're going to probably stop for, I don't know, so five minutes to get everybody. Time to get up and out, and then we'll be in executive session for probably half an hour, and there is no action to follow. Nope, I think so. In fact, I don't even think.
She was probably so excited.